I just, I just read the amount of all 45.
All right, is everyone packed in here? Okay, we got a lot of people. So it's 5:30 PM. We'll call this city council regular session to order for Thursday, April 17th, 2025. If you will please join me in rising and for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for whose advance on the nation under God indivisible, without any injustice for all.
All right, can we get a roll call, please?
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abu Osley? Ms. Spencer? Mr. Brandt?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
And next is our moment of silence, please. Good, thank you. Next, we have a couple of proclamations. Our first one is for Arbor Day, and I've asked Councilman Harper to read it, please. So if anybody's here to receive that proclamation, please feel free to come forward.
This is great. Whereas in 1872, Jay Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas since 2020, the 2020 deratio reduced Marion's tree canopy by an estimated 45%. Marion's urban forestry division has planted more than 6,000 trees on public land and participated in programs that have resulted in the planting of thousands of more trees on private property. And whereas Marion is well-known for its tree-lined streets and parks, and has been recognized as a Tree City USA community. And whereas Arbor Day activities have been carried out all over the United States since 1872 for promoting efforts to plant and maintain trees for their many benefits. Now, therefore, I grant Harper, on behalf of Mayor Abu Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim Friday, April 25th, 2025 as Arbor Day in the City of Marion, and urge all residents to support efforts to care for our trees and woodlands, and support tree planting efforts, and encourage residents to plant trees for present and future generations. Joe?
Thank you for the City of Marion, for your support for the trees, for improving, improving Marion's trees over the years, and even more so after the deratio. Thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you from the Marion Tree Board. We really appreciate all the support that our community gives to us. So again, thank you.
Now. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. Next up, we have a proclamation for National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, and I've asked Councilman Sternad to read that one. So whoever's here to receive that one, I think Deputy Chief Knott, I think that's you, please come forward.
Whereas emergencies that require police, fire, and emergency medical services can occur at any time. And whereas when an emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and preservation of property. And whereas the safety of our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from individuals who contact the Marion Public Safety Communications Center. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our residents have with emergency services. And whereas public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers, firefighters, and paramedics by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them with information, and ensuring their safety. And whereas public safety telecommunicators of the public Marion Public Safety Communications Centers have just contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients. And whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Now, therefore, I, Randy Sterned, on behalf of Nicholas Abu Osley, Mayor of the City of Marion, Iowa, do hereby proclaim the week of April 13th through April 19th, 2025 as National Public Safety Communicate Telecommunicators Week. In the City of Marion, Iowa, in honor of the men and women who, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and residents safe.
Just real quick, I do want to say I don't know if they were aware they should be here tonight, or I'm sure they would have. But that's okay. I want to thank them publicly, all the, all the firefighters here as well. These communications operators, obviously, they are our lifeline, and they do sometimes a thankless job. They're under a lot of stress, but they do a great job in what they do. And I know the firefighters and the police officers all support them. So thank you for this.
Thank you. And I take it by the makeup of this room that the majority of you are here for the next item, which we have a couple fire promotions. So Chief Fagan, I'm guessing you're leading this one.
Good evening, Council. Uh, this is the, this is the fun part of the job, and I know we talk about that every time we do this. But I mean, just looking at the room and the sense of, sense of our team is just a, just an awesome reminder of that. But tonight, we recognize the promotions of both Aaron Budakoffer and Curtis. And, and Aaron is on my right, and Curtis is on my left. So we're going to talk about the role of the station captain. The role of the station captain is arguably the most important in the fire service. They supervise and lead a crew of firefighters, providing direction not only on what to do, but the way it is to be done. Yes, that means our officers must be effective supervisors for the completion of tasks and ensure alignment with city policy. But as importantly, they must lead their crews, setting the tone to achieve the mission, not just how to get the job done, but through the way of our core values, reflecting how the Marion Fire Department serves its residents and visitors. Aaron Budakoffer joined the department in 2018 and has served as a firefighter paramedic and tactical paramedic with the Marion Special Response Team, which is a joint operations group with the Marion Police Department. Aaron is an Army veteran, having attained the rank of sergeant, where he led soldiers in an active combat area. During his military service, Aaron received several commendations, including the Combat Infantry Badge, Physical Fitness Award, and the Army Commendation Medal. Aaron holds a both a bachelor's degree and associate's degree in fire science administration. With this promotion to captain, Captain Aaron Budakoffer has been assigned to Station One and is making an impact in his new role as a company officer. Please join me in recognizing and congratulating Captain Budakoffer. The battalion chief fills the role of the shift commander. Stand by. The battalion chief fills the role of the shift commander, providing oversight of the three station captains and as the incident commander on high-risk emergency incidents, such as structure fires, motor vehicle collisions, and cardiac arrests, just to name a few. The incident commander is the person responsible for managing and coordinating all aspects of an incident's response. They lead the response, establish the strategy, make tactical assignments for all responding crews, and are responsible for the accountability and safety of all firefighters. In addition to their operational shift responsibilities, battalion chiefs are also managers of a fire department program, such as fire suppression, physical resources, or emergency medical services. Curtis Suckliff joined the department in 2013, serving as a firefighter paramedic. Curtis was promoted to captain in 2021 and holds a master's degree in public administration, bachelor's degree in fire science administration, and associate's degrees both in fire science and paramedicine. Curtis attained his FO credential, or fire officer, through the Center for Public Safety Excellence, one of six in the Marion Fire Department, and of only 23 in the entire state of Iowa. Curtis also serves as a volunteer peer assessor with the Center for Public Safety Excellence for other officers working towards their professional credential. With this promotion to battalion chief, Chief Suckliff has been assigned to Shift Three in the Operations Branch, and is the new program manager for the department's Emergency Medical Services Program. Chief Suckliff, we look forward to your exceptional leadership. Please join me in recognizing and congratulating Battalion Chief Curtis Suckliff. All right, so at this time, we're going to pin the badges. So Captain Budakoffer, if you'd like to come around and introduce your wife, we'll come up with an afterwards, Chief Suckliff, if you want to do the same. Okay, and we'll have you go up front, and we'll have you pin the badges.
My wife Andrea. I'm going to have my wife Sarah pin my badge.
All right, go ahead. Yep. Congratulations. Let's give him another round of applause.
Congratulations.
Congratulations to you both. And I always think when we have these presentations that it's just really inspiring to see everyone come and support, and I think that's awesome that you guys do that every single time. The camaraderie is just very obvious, and it's great. So thank you so much. Next, we have a public forum, but I'll give them a couple seconds because I know the majority of the room's probably leaving. It happens almost every time, now it feels. All right. Next up, we have a public forum. This public forum is for comments from the public on, excuse me, on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. There will be a time for public comment on any topic at the end of the meeting. I'm just going over the rules of procedure really quick. I have no concerns. I think you guys will follow them all, but I read them anyways. If you haven't, please fill out one of the yellow comment cards. They can be found at the end of the table there. Please complete and turn into the city clerk. Do not approach the dais where we sit. If you have handouts, please also submit those to the city clerk to give to us later. All people wishing to speak, in any public forum will be provided a maximum of five minutes to make their comments. If you need the timers right there, if you need to see where you're at. Please don't engage in conduct or speech that is threatening to any person or that incites violence. Please avoid repeating comments or points that have been previously shared. Please do not engage in conduct that disrupts orderly progress of the meeting, or engage in speech or conduct which interferes with others' ability to participate in the meeting. And failure to adhere to these guidelines or engaging in any disruptive speech or behavior may result in removal of the meeting, removal from the meeting. So this is the time the public forum is now open for any topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing. Does anyone want to come forward? Sure.
I'm Drew Retsch. I'm with Jerry Holmes, and I spoke to you before about foam sheeting. So that's the, what I'm here to talk about is ordinance number 2507. And I would urge you to adopt that ordinance and code as the International Residential Code has it written for the use of foam sheeting versus the amendment that's been proposed. Foam sheeting is greener, it's more efficient, and more sustainable when it's used versus standard sheeting on a home. I provided Gary some numbers. I don't know what he provided you earlier, but it's over $2,000 on the homes I provided him to put sheeting on the way that they propose. That would price out over 2,000 families in the state of Iowa from being able to use that greener, more efficient way of building a home. There, it was mentioned that they would need destructive testing to ensure that the nails were in the studs. And I offer a random test that they could use. Just have the builder unzip whatever piece of siding they want, and if they can pull the nails out of this foam sheeting, they obviously didn't hit a stud, and it would fail. And then they would have to do whatever the building department required. So I would urge you again to, to adopt it as the code is written and not with the proposed amendment. And if you had any questions, I'd be happy to answer them, or I don't want to stay around all at night until the end of the agenda to hear how it comes out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else want to come forward and speak on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing? Sure.
Hi, my name's Erin Erickson. I am speaking on behalf of ordinance number 2505 in opposition of it, because it, in, when I read it, it would suggest that a permit would be needed to plant natives in the City of Marion in your backyard. We live in Prairie Ridge, and we have two pocket prairie sections in our backyard. One is, or they're both about 80 by 15. And I brought a photo so you can see what it looks like in the summertime. And this would just hinder anybody who would like to plant native pocket prairies in their backyard, as far as I read it. I've also been talking to Rich Patterson. He lives in Lynn County, and he does a burn on his prairie land. And I had tried to get a burn permit to be able to burn our prairie because it is in the third year. And it would be great to burn, to reduce some of the vegetation and, and restore the natives that are there. However, I was denied that, which I understand because it's, I'm in the City of Marion, so I completely understand that. But as far as this amendment, I just think that if you're trying to encourage more pollinators and more clean water, I'm also a watershed coordinator. And so I understand the runoff and the fertilizer and all of the things that happen on land and in neighborhoods. I just feel like we need to have more pollinators. We need to have more native species in, in yards. So that's, that's what I just wanted to say. I'm opposed to this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that wants to speak on topics listed on the agenda but not associated with a public hearing? All right, seems like we can close that public forum and move to the consent agenda, please.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve the consent agenda as follows. This will be items A1 through F1, resolutions 32343 through 32357.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. Are there any questions and discussion on the consent agenda? Once, one, twice. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're at our regular agenda. This is a public hearing regarding the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. So that public hearing is now open. Seems we have a presentation.
Thank you. We do start our budget process in, back in July, and we'd have several touchpoints across the year with city council. And all of this culminates in adoption tonight. Here in the City of Marion, we do a zero-based budget, which means departments start with $0 and have to justify with transactions every line in their budget. Because property taxes primarily support the general fund, my presentation's going to focus on the general fund. The general fund operating budget for fiscal year 2526 totals $34 million in expenses, which is a 2.5% increase over the previous year, when you exclude the transfers that just moved dollars to our equipment reserve fund. Public safety makes up more than 50% of this budget and includes the addition of one E911 communications operator to support our goal of maintaining a minimum of a two-person staffing. Culture and rec accounts for 21% of our general fund expenditures and includes funding for a full-time events coordinator and staffing for our newly Central Plaza project. This is offset by savings from other areas where we streamlined or reduced costs. So when I say that, I'm, the operating costs to maintain Central Plaza as construction completes going forward. Our revenues are over 75% for general funds supported by property tax. So as we look at that property tax levy, it's $14 and approximately 90 cents. In addition to the general fund, property taxes do support our debt obligations. And you can see that on there. So what is the impact to the homeowner? If property values stay the same from January 1, 2023 to January 1, 2024, just want to note for the public that the new assessments that you received in the mail are not pertaining to this budget. Those assessments are for the fiscal year 27 budget. It's approximately a 3% increase in multi-residential properties, similar to residential because of the same rollback rate now, and they are also approximately a 3% increase in tax. For a commercial property at $1 million, you're looking at an annual change of $103. And then we like to show this one just to show residential, the top one is growth for the same taxable value. So if you look at the taxable value column, you can see that it stays fixed at 109,300. In order for that to occur, your property would have needed to decrease in value 2.3%. And in order for you to pay the exact same taxes on your home, you would have needed to have your property decrease in value by 2.81%. It's less relevant this year because it's a non-growth year, but it's very beneficial to understand that on reassessment years. So again, high level total expenditures in the budget, this is going to include capital improvement program. A lot of times in that area, because you can see that our expenditures do exceed our total, total revenues. But there are times that we save up dollars, i.e. local option sales tax dollars, in order to do a larger project. So that's intentional on our part. And that will conclude my presentation.
Thank you. Did we receive any comments outside of the meeting for this item?
I have not received any.
Okay, thank you. All right, now is the time for any member of the public to come forward if they want to speak on the proposed fiscal year 2026 budget. Does anyone want to come forward and speak on the budget? Seeing none, I'll close that public hearing and we'll move to the resolution.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number 32358, approving fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number 32358, which approves our fiscal year 2025-2026 budget. Any discussion or any more questions? Talk about it year-round, so. Seeing the not, yeah?
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry.
Nope.
Had to engage my brain on the question I was wondering about.
I can appreciate that.
Leanne, so our general, general fund goes up by 2.54%?
Yes.
And the proposal, or the levy is 3%, correct? So those, do those typically pretty much align year in and year out?
Not necessarily.
Or it's variable?
It's variable.
Okay, okay, but there is, at least for this, for this budget year, what we're looking at is pretty close conformance between the levy and the budget.
Yes.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Sorry, if we can go back to the, the levy rate slide. And I realize it's difficult to read, but an important note is when you look at the general fund levy, the middle portion of there, so the general fund is really kind of what funds the operations. The other two levies that roll up into the overall property tax levy, the debt service and the employee pension and benefit levy. But I'm calling attention to the general fund aspect because that is what funds the operations. And when you look at that, that does go down. I mean, that, that is a reflection of the work that is being done from the budgetary standpoint of the department, so that, the reliance on that does go down. And as we've talked about in, in the budget works, work sessions, some of the, the increase in the levy is actually tied to some of our debt obligations as they've been planned out, and some of the things are coming due at this particular time. Leanne highlighted some of the, the planned cost drivers, the dispatch operator, the, the special events coordinator, which is a result of defunding one other position and reorganization. So it's not, we're not adding headcount, but that's the, that's the result of a process in the work that our departments are doing. But again, I think that middle section does get lost in the overall presentation about the budget, that the general fund, the, the main portion that is funding those operations, that levy portion is going down. It's small, but when we're, when we're managing things like insurance costs going up for property and casualty, a lot of those things, Council's heard presentation from our broker on some of those things. I do think that this is a very responsible budget, and it takes into account the, the community feedback that we've gotten, and certainly the direction that we've worked through with council throughout the and certainly the direction that we've worked through with council throughout the, the years.
One thing I would add to what Ryan said, since we're talking specifically about that levy, that debt service levy does include dollars that will pay off the, the derecho bond that we did. So the interest from the derecho bond, the principal from the derecho bond will be paid by FEMA, the FEMA grant that we receive in, but the interest and the issuance costs that were baked into the bond issue will be paid. And so that's a large portion of that debt service levy increase. And the other one is because we had other funds we were abating and the, those funds have kind of dropped off at this point. So that makes up the other increase.
Awesome. Thank you for that context. Any other questions, discussion? That's the only thing I'll add is I'll take a moment to just recognize and thank the staff for all of their work that they've done on this to get to this point. It's always a big deal to approve the entire fiscal year budget. Just from being the newer council member still compared to the, the rest of the folks here. It's been really helpful to have this zero-based budgeting process and have these regular updates. And I also encourage members of the public to continue to engage in that because once summer rolls back around, we will be once again going through the next budget section by section. And there's tons of chances to ask questions or make comments while we're going through the process as well. So I encourage folks to do that. But with that, it's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three, two, three, five, eight, approving our fiscal year budget. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next is a public hearing regarding the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty capital improvement program. The public hearing is now open and we have another presentation from Leanne.
You do. Similarly to our budget process, our process for approval of the capital improvement program starts early in the year. Back in August, department heads submitted their requests. We had several touchpoints with city council along the way to determine which projects got funded. And again, culminating today with adoption of the CIP. There were just a couple of updates since the last version that don't change the expenditures total in the CIP, but the timing of one project and then also a little slight change in funding. So this one is funding, just switching between the two sanitary trunk sewer projects as we are trying to wrap up and finish our ARPA dollars and get those expended. So we are just moving a hundred and fifty dollars from project four and five to project seven and swapping that out with local option sales tax, so not a change overall, just between projects. And then here's the other one, the timing of the Arton Alley utility extension, moving it up to fiscal year twenty-six from fiscal year twenty-seven. And so just really quick highlights on the CIP, total expenditures of approximately a hundred and forty-one million for the whole fiscal year twenty-six through fiscal year thirty. Fiscal year twenty-six, it's about thirty-four million. Projects with the highest expenditures include the sanitary trunk sewer, project four and five, Lucor Road Elevated Water Tower, Seamar Trail, and Lucor Road Pedestrian Bridge and Side Path. And then for the benefit of the public, seventy-two-point-five percent of those dollars are in transportation, eight-point-four in sanitary sewer, and you can see the rest there on the screen.
Awesome. Thank you. Did you, anyone receive any public comments from outside the meeting on this?
I have not received any.
Oh. All right, thank you. The public hearing is open, so if anybody wants to come forward from the public to talk about the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty capital improvement program, now is the time. Seeing no movement, I will close the public hearing and move to resolution.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three, two, three, five, nine, approving the fiscal year twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty capital improvement program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three, two, three, five, nine, which is our twenty-twenty-six through twenty-thirty capital improvement program. Any questions or discussion? All right, all those in favor of approving resolution number three, two, three, five, nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The resolution carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three, two, three, six, zero, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement for the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series twenty-twenty-five A.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three, two, three, six, zero. Is there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving resolution number three, two, three, six, zero, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve resolution number three, two, three, six, one, authorizing the use of a preliminary official statement for the sale of taxable general obligation annual appropriation urban renewal bond series twenty-twenty-five B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolution number three, two, three, six, one. Is there any question or discussion? All those in favor of approving resolution number three, two, three, six, one, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero five, amending chapter one, three, twenty-four of the Marion Code of Ordinances relating to weeds definition and natural landscaping. And this is our second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash zero five. Any discussion or questions?
Yes.
Yes, Grant?
So I, our commentator at the beginning of the meeting raised a couple of good questions, I thought. One is about work that goes on in the, in the backyards. The, the basis of requesting a permit being obtained for that. And quite honestly, I'm asking for somebody very important in my life, my wife, because we have a couple of spots we were thinking about turning into more natural areas. So do we have any sense as to the criticality for backyard permitting? Or is that just to ensure some uniformity or consistency throughout the community? I'm trying to understand the basis for that. Fill me in.
Yes, I, you, I think you said it pretty well, honestly, Grant, is, it really is about the, the familiarity, that looking at those species that truly are those native grasses, natural native grasses versus those that aren't. I think that there is always that, there's not always the commonality, they're not all equal to one another. So that is really the purpose of that in having, having it not get out of control, those types of things. Because we also get those converse, those questions about weeds versus native plantings and those types of things. So this really just helps us streamline so that we are, that we are fair across the board of what those native grasses and native plants are.
So I know the list has been already created. And will be attached with the ordinance when this goes live. So the, the purpose of the permitting is in part an education effort to say, here are the approved native plants.
Correct.
That you can include. Does, and now I'm going to expose some ignorance here, but I'm sure I'll fix that quickly. What, there's nothing about the design of the planting beds or anything that our ordinance specifies. It's only the species that are going in there.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
The second question that came up is, and I presume this is with dense populations of native plants. I know that we have to have periodic burns, burns on our areas where we have the plantings for the pollinators. I suppose, again, with a, a dense planting in a, on a residential space, at least from the, from the horticultural standpoint, burns are desirable to maintain the vitality of that bed. And I, you know, this is, this, this seems to be a touchy issue, at least in my mind. Close proximity burning to residential structures and no convenient way to schedule it and monitor it appropriately. So that is not something that's possible for us to entertain uniformly.
It is not, and that's really more of a Lynn County Public Health that tells us what we can burn, when we can burn. And unfortunately, that is not an option for residents in, in Marion.
Right.
Or any other resident in, in the metro area.
Right. Okay, it's, it's on the basis of density of population. Because people out in the country.
Yeah, if I could add just a little bit to that, Grant. We've worked real closely with the Parks Department on the development of this and, you know, taking into consideration community risk relative to this initiative, which we absolutely see the value of it, but we want to stay cognizant of the risk. There are other ways to maintain those native prairie grasses. We understand the preference to burning them, but given our urban density, we really want to be cognizant of wildland urban interface. And that's something that, as Kim mentioned, we do work closely with Lynn County Public Health relative to that ordinance on open burning in the city limits. For precisely the reasons that you mentioned of the, the dense population and structures that are combustible relative to these. Our wins make that, make it a, a very considerable risk.
Sure. Okay, thank, thanks for the context on both of those matters. Thank you.
Anything else? And again, this is with ordinances, it's just our second consideration. So an ordinance has to be approved three times for it to become law. So all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five dash zero five, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash one, three, amending chapter two, three, eight, article one of the Code of Ordinances relating to park rules and, and metal detecting, initial consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five dash thirteen for the initial consideration. Any questions or discussion? I guess my question, it might also be an ignorant question, is kind of what brought this forward to, to have to obtain permission from the park board?
Mostly, we had a situation that a couple of weeks ago out in our plaza, there were quite a few individuals that were out digging into, into the plaza where irrigation system is, those types of things. And there were probably anywhere from twenty to thirty people out there. And I actually asked the question and asked, is this something that we allow? Because I know this is something that we have to be particular with, especially when you have irrigation systems. And so I, I noticed some people out there digging. And that was a concern in this particular situation. So this is where we really do want to have some understanding of where, where will they go, where will they be? And is there some things that we, they need to be watchful for? The last thing we want to do is to dig in an area that then requires us to repair and replace such things, such as that as an example.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I guess what was, what was the driving force for that activity to be going on?
We have several, we have several groups in the metro area. And this is, this particular group actually, they all had the same color shirt on. I don't remember what they had as an emblem as who they were exactly, but they're out metal detecting, looking for old coins, all sorts of things that they may, that they come across. And I have seen this often throughout my years in this field. So this isn't, you know, this type of activity is not an un-normal activity, but it is something that, in certain areas, that we do want to regulate that type of activity.
Anyone else? All right, all those in favor of approving the initial consideration of ordinance number twenty-five dash thirteen, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance carries. Next, we have a public comment period regarding approving a schedule of no parking zones, including cul-de-sacs throughout Marion, area three. This was tabled at our February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five meeting. That public comment period is now open. Seems we have a presentation.
Yes, Your Honor. So, quick background, we've gone through this, but high level for those that maybe were not in attendance. We had an instance with the fire apparatus on Third Street. As you can see here, where cars were parked across from one another, the fire apparatus was actually not able to make it down the street to respond to the emergency. And so they actually had to back, back down the street in order to respond. From that, we were then given direction to take those old parts of town that we allow parking on both sides and take it a step at a time. So the first area was the area north of Twenty-Ninth Avenue, west of Tenth Street, east of Al Burnett, south of Thirty-third. The second area was what we call the Alleghenies or the West Eighth Avenue area. That steep area with all the, the roads back there was the second area. The third area was more of a, a pie shape. It was Tenth Street on the east side, Seventh Avenue on the south side, and Indian Creek on the northwest side. And then the next area that we're looking at is our cul-de-sacs and the streets that lead into the cul-de-sac. So when we talk about a cul-de-sac, we're only talking about the round bulb portion of it and then the street outside of it. So these recommendations, after we got the, the feedback on the last public hearing on this, we changed our, our modification, our recommendation slightly. So I'm just going to walk through some of this. So again, this was back in twenty-one that the fire apparatus could not make it down the street. Any street that was built after July first of two thousand and seven actually is typically only built twenty-six foot wide as a residential street and only has parking on one side. And all cul-de-sacs are no parking at all for any, any road that's built today. So we're only talking about those that are prior to two thousand and seven and bringing them up to current standards. So some items that we talked about before is we have a solid waste, solid waste fleet. We have snowplows, our jet truck and camera van and emergency response. And none of our trucks are getting any smaller. So getting that so that we have access to our infrastructure to maintain it. And so we have a standard of care and setting those community standards with our EMS. So again, high level, just some pictures. The top right was actually when we had a snow ban in effect. And so there you can see in a cul-de-sac, multiple cars double parked in the cul-de-sac. The other one, you can just see multiple cars parked in that cul-de-sac. Something new that we did is we actually took Tower ninety-one out to a cul-de-sac. So this is Barrington Court and set it up. So a lot of people think it's just the width of the fire engine, but when we have to set that up, there's also legs that have to be set up as well. So this you can see as it's set up. So the setup is forty-five to fifty feet with about five foot of space around it. The outriggers are nineteen and a half, so if our street's only twenty-six foot wide, that doesn't leave a lot of room for a car to be parked there. And so in this case, when they set it up in the center of the cul-de-sac, it was only able to reach the roof edge. So if there was a car parked here, they may have to shift this farther away from that and may not be able to attack the fire the way that they need to. So as a compromise based on what we got before, was number one, to have, if they have a raised island such as Cambridge Court here, to leave that cul-de-sac as no parking because it's basically the same space that's available in the stub leading up to the cul-de-sac. But if it was a cul-de-sac that did not have a center island, then we would restrict it only to garbage days. The stub streets, we would still remain as the same. So one side, depending on the width of the street, would be classified as no parking. So that was the compromise that staff came up with based on recommendations that we got. And so then we'll open up to the public and we can answer additional questions. And this is just from the previous comment period. We did have seventy-seven comments that were received in advance of the February meeting and we had twelve that spoke at that meeting. We've done a mailing sense and there might be residents here that want to talk. And then we do have a list of ones to go through as well.
Awesome. So we do have comments from outside the meeting, right, Rachel?
Correct. You want me to go through those first?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Can I not be up here?
I'm just going to go through the comments that we received in advance of the meetings.
and then we'll open it up to those here in attendance. So fourteen forty, Seventeenth Avenue wrote in opposition. Eleven ninety Bedford Court wrote in opposition. Forty thirty Fox Hollow Court wrote in opposition. One sixty-five Grand Avenue wrote in opposition. Twenty-eight forty Lansing Court wrote in asking clarifying questions. Twenty-four fifty Oak Savannah Court wrote in opposition. Thirty-four ten Park Crest Court wrote in support. Twenty-nine thirty-five Roseberry Court wrote in opposition. Twenty-three ten Rosewood Ridge Court wrote in support and opposition. Thirty-four eighty-five Royal Avenue wrote in opposition. Fifty thirty-five Silver Oak Court wrote in asking clarifying questions. Fifty forty Silver Oak Court wrote in opposition. Twenty-five twenty Westminster Place wrote in opposition. Twenty-five twenty Westminster Place wrote in opposition. Twenty-five forty Westminster Place wrote in opposition. Twenty-two zero five Windsor Court wrote in opposition.
Thank you. Now is the time that the public comment period is open for members of the public to come forward. Does anyone want to come forward and speak on this?
Hello?
Name an address if you could.
I'm Philip Keller. I'm at one sixty Twenty-Ninth Street Court. And I had some questions, but the previous presentation answered them. But I am in favor of this because it would help emergency services get proper access. And it is kind of annoying trying to get into the street, and then there's like cars on both sides, so there's only like one lane essentially open. So I am in support of this.
Thank you. Does anyone else want to come forward and speak on this topic?
Thank you for this opportunity, members of the board, council. My name is Walter Abbott. I live at fourteen eighty Seventeenth Avenue. I was at the first meeting. My issues are still the same. I now got the new recommendation, and I kind of want to know what the fairness was to allow the cul-de-sac to have parking, except for on garbage days, but the street coming into cannot. Measure the street, and from curb to curb, it's twenty-nine in front of my house. I'm sure that you deduct for the curb. But there's like three or four cars overnight parked on the street. Most of those are gone during the day. So it doesn't interfere with the garbage guys. It doesn't interfere hardly with anything. We have traffic. You'd be lucky to have ten cars a day on the cul-de-sac. So, or on the street coming into the cul-de-sac. So if they get, they can park in front of their places, I don't think it's fair for the streets coming into it to have no parking on one side of the street. One, it reduces your sellability of your house. Nobody wants to buy a house. Or I sure wouldn't have bought my house if I knew this was coming down the road, where I can't park in front of my own home. Two, it's going to force people to start parking on the yard, and I'm sure you guys aren't going to like that. I mean, it should have been thought out a little bit better. If it's a equipment issue, maybe it should have been researched a little better before you bought the equipment. But I really don't understand why Seventeenth Avenue is really an issue. And I know this is a comment thing, but I wish you guys could give some feedback so I have, somebody could have some understanding. So, but I'm in opposition of it. I don't think it's fair. I don't think it's right. We're either being penalized or we're being prejudiced against it. And I don't know which one it is because you guys won't talk back. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, City Council members. My name is Ann Loftus, and I live on forty-one seventy-five Ivy Court in Marion. And I'm speaking on behalf of our cul-de-sac. We are opposed to this ordinance. We understand the no parking on garbage days in the cul-de-sac. But for twenty-five years, most of us have lived in the cul-de-sac, and we haven't had problems with emergency vehicles in the cul-de-sac. The other part of this is that we believe we should have parking on the entrance of our cul-de-sac on both sides. We're also asking the question, what about when the landscapers come, or when Amazon comes, or when Prime comes, or when any of those people come to our cul-de-sac? Where should they park? When our remodelers come, where should they park? I know that at one time you said there could be exceptions to the rule. Can there still be exceptions to the rule if this does pass? Can we just call and say, our families are coming this weekend? Can we have exceptions to this rule? Another thing that we noticed was we took pictures as well. There was a fire recently in Fox Hollow Court next to our cul-de-sac. There were four fire engines there, and it didn't appear to be a problem. And then one other thing that I wanted to point out. I was an educator for thirty-four years. I was a special educator and dealt with data, as I wrote many, many, many IEPs. And one of the things I learned in all my education was that it took seven data points to actually make a trend. So what's the trend that was set that actually says that we have seven data? Do we have at least seven data points that made this trend before we made this change in our actual proposals?
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward and speak on this topic? All right, seeing none, we will close the public comment period and move to the next agenda item.
Mayor Protem, I'd like to make a motion to remove from table Resolution three-two-two-seven-six, approving schedule of no parking zones, including cul-de-sacs throughout Marion, Area Three. And this was tabled on February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to remove from table Resolution number three-two-two-seven-six. Are there any questions or discussion on moving to remove from the table? Seeing none, all those in favor of removing from table Resolution number three-two-two-seven-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion is back on the table, back off the table, sorry.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve Resolution number three-two-two-seven-six, approving schedule of no parking zones, including cul-de-sacs throughout Marion, Area Three. This was originally tabled on February twentieth, twenty-twenty-five. Second.
So moving seconded to approve Resolution number three-two-two-seven-six. Questions? Discussion? Steve?
Yeah, Mike, just in a summary, I just want to make sure we understand the changes that occurred from February. But as it stands today for the cul-de-sacs, if you have an island in your cul-de-sac, there's no parking at any time in that cul-de-sac.
That is the current staff proposal.
This is the current proposal today. If you do not have an island, you can have, parking is allowed in that cul-de-sac except for garbage collection days.
Correct, on the ones that are in this table. So any of them that are built from today forward are those that already have regulations in them. So we're only talking about those prior to two thousand and seven.
Correct. So I think for anybody else listening to this, this is not anything, we're not picking on cul-de-sacs this month. This is a citywide effort to control and manage the parking on the streets. And this is being done on a citywide basis. So we started this effort three weeks, three years ago, and this is going to continue for several more years. So this is just simply the area of cul-de-sacs. And in my opinion, I think some of the changes made since our February meeting are very accommodating. Again, I had made, thrown out the idea that if there was anybody parked in the cul-de-sac on garbage collection day, that they just pass through and don't collect anybody's garbage. But I guess that is now going to be covered by ordinance. So at this point, I'm completely in favor of the changes proposed.
Good. Chief, a question for you regarding, is it Tower Ninety-One?
Yes.
The utilization of Tower Ninety-One, and I'm going to at least express my understanding, but correct me if I'm wrong. Utilization of Tower Ninety-One is appropriate so that you have full structure access for fire suppression, even to the back portion of the home?
That's ideal, yes. We want to have as much, what's called spread of the ladder, to where if we needed to access all three sides for a rescue of any type or for roof operations, that we can support getting firefighters safely to that area to be able to perform that critical task.
Would Tower Ninety-One also provide some mitigating support for neighboring structures if winds were an issue?
That's accurate, yes. So there is a, what's called a water pipe that goes up the ladder. There is a nozzle at the end of the ladder as well that can deploy a water stream. That's a water curtain to protect exposures. So what you're talking about is we would be able to deploy a nozzle between structures to protect one from catching fire while the other one is being suppressed. So that is another tactical option for us on incidents. But being able to get that nozzle in position, we can spray water from further away, but it does inhibit that tactical advantage if we aren't able to get it in position.
So changing the topic to medical response, we send the whole battalion in one of our trucks, correct?
Not completely accurate. We send a crew.
A crew, okay.
For example, on Tower Ninety-One, there is a crew of three firefighters, one of them being a paramedic, the other two would be EMTs. We don't, so for example, if we have limited access of any apparatus, that isn't going to stop us, per se. We're not going to stop and say, well, we can't get there. We're not going to go. We are always going to come. We may be delayed. So I want to be real clear on that, that, you know, this ordinance doesn't mean that the fire department isn't going to respond. We are devoted to our mission. We will be there, but we may be delayed. In the example from twenty-twenty-one, they were delayed, but they could have been there faster. And so that's for the mission of EMS, we would be delayed to potentially provide care.
Okay. So just a comment, Mike, this really goes back to what you've shared, and I think it dovetails with some of Steve's commentary. I have, one of the cul-de-sacs of concern here is immediately to the north of where I live. It was built pre-two thousand and seven and doesn't have any parking restriction. However, immediately to my south, because they were built at the same time that my street was, those two cul-de-sacs have the very same restrictions, and they have center islands. They have the restrictions that you're proposing for those that presently do not. So this just, I think, brings to uniformity how we're treating each of the cul-de-sacs and providing as much latitude as we can on those that don't have an island. So from that standpoint, I support this and from Chief's perspective relative to emergency response of all types.
Yeah, Steve?
Yeah, one more point of clarification, and I know one individual that made a comment was asking about this as well. So when you have somebody that's coming to their house to do landscaping or some other service company that is coming, and say you're in one of these cul-de-sacs with an island, where are those companies supposed to park? Are they not allowed even on a temporary basis to park in that cul-de-sac? Do they have to park in their driveway? I just want to have kind of on record what the clarification is because I'm not a hundred percent sure I know what it is.
Sure. So obviously, we want to have free flow of traffic. So if you look at one of those cul-de-sacs, it does make it a little bit of a challenge to get around that area if there isn't much. But they can fill out what's called a hold harmless online, and it gets routed through all the departments. So we may put restrictions on it. But there is a way that they can have temporary relief to park in that area, even though it's signed for no parking twenty-four-seven. That's available even on a street. If you wanted to have a block party with you and all your neighbors, you could do that same process.
Well, that will accommodate if you want to have a family reunion or a family get-together. But you're not going to know when the landscaper is going to come necessarily, or a service company, whether it's MediaCom, to come fix something. You're not always going to know what that is or have the ability or the amount of time to get that hold harmless. So in those situations, would those companies have to park in their driveway versus the street?
I would say, like, let's take the Cambridge Drive for example. So in that case, I would say if they can, if they build while the homeowner is gone, they could park in the driveway. Otherwise, park down here, and hopefully their equipment, like if they're a long-mowing company, they park their trailer here and drive the mower up and mow the lawn or whatever it is they're doing. But if they were to park just right here, any resident that comes home then wouldn't be able to drive by them to get to their own house.
Okay, you answered the question. Thank you.
Anything else? I guess the only comment I would make, add to that, is something more common, such as Amazon package or other delivery. I mean, they're not going to be parking anyways. They're going to put their lights on, drop it off and go. So I don't foresee that being, and Amazon drivers do whatever they want anyways. But any other discussion or questions on this item? All right, all those in favor of approving Resolution number three-two-two-seven-six, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution carries. Next, we have a public hearing regarding the twenty-twenty-five pavement patching project. The public hearing is now open, and Mike, I'm guessing this is also you.
It is. You guys get to listen to me tonight. So this is one of our projects that we do as part of our pavement management program. So as we establish our PCI pavement condition index, we then establish parts of town that need to be fixed. And so these are full debt patching surfaces, similar to what we did on Tower Terrace last year. You notice the stitching and stuff that we're doing. So those incremental things that we can do to make the pavement last much longer, rather than just letting it continue to fail until we have to replace it. So the lifespan of concrete is a nice little chart that comes down. So by doing those little things up here that are much cheaper, we're extending the life of that pavement. So in this case, it's Boyson Road from the west city limits to Central Avenue, Sixth Avenue from Eighth Street to Fifteenth Street. So as you noticed, last year, we did one of the crosswalks where it was the banded crosswalks on Sixth Avenue, and that started to shift next to the bricks. So similarly, we're fixing this one as well and doing some patchwork in there as well. It's also Twenty-Ninth Avenue from Thirty-Fifth Street to Highland Drive and Thirty-Fifth Street from Monarch Avenue to Twenty-Ninth Avenue. So we did receive several bids on this. The low bid came in from Cedar Falls Construction at one million, one hundred and forty-one thousand, four hundred and five dollars, seventy-eight point six percent of the engineer's estimate, has a late start date of July seventh of twenty-five, eighty working days, and it has one thousand dollars in liquidated damages if they do not complete it within that timeframe. We are recommending that we proceed with a reward and the project itself.
So thank you. Has there been any comments on this topic outside of the meeting?
I have not received any.
No.
Thank you. Now is the time for anybody in the public to come forward and speak about the twenty-twenty-five pavement patching project. Does anyone want to come forward and speak topic? Seeing none, the public hearing is now closed, and we'll move to the motion.
Mayor Protem, I move to approve project calendar regarding the twenty-twenty-five pavement patching project as follows. Resolutions three-two-three-six-two through three-two-three-six-three.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve resolutions three-two-three-six-two and three-two-three- It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolutions three-two-three-six-two and three-two-three-six-three. Are there any questions or discussion? Steve?
Yeah, since the bid came in quite a bit under the engineer's estimate, and I'm assuming we already have dollars in the CIP for this, is there any consideration to add another project to get done in this calendar year?
Always.
So that'll be coming back maybe at a later date?
We would have to do it as change order, and if they're willing to do it for the unit prices. But again, based on our purchasing policy, depending on the dollar amount, it would either come before council, or if it's within my threshold, I would approve it.
Okay, so that will be evaluated and considered.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Anyone else, Randy?
Mike, um, with this particular company, I don't recall seeing them ever putting a bid in with us in the past. Do we have any? Work with us, do we know their background?
Yeah, so they, they actually have done a lot of work for the city of Marion. This is the first time they've primed the job, typically they're a sub. So a lot of times, like when we do a major street that has smoothness requirements, they're actually the company that comes in and does the smoothness grinding. So they have the equipment, um, they're a big enough company, they had to have a bid bond. So they have to have a bid bond, a payment and performance bond, which also turns into the maintenance bond. So we have no reason to not go with them.
Great, thank you.
Grant?
Yeah, Mike, can we back up to the, the dollars, uh, some mills? Okay.
And there's a detailed bid tab in your packet too, but it don't show all the numbers.
Okay, I just wanted to kind of just calibrate what those were. So Midwest was a little lower than engineering estimate, and Iowa Civil was above. Am I reading that right?
Yep, we like to be right in the middle. If we're doing our job right, we should be right in the middle.
Yeah, okay, all right, thank you.
Anyone else? All right, those in favor of approving Resolutions three-two-three-six-two and three-two-three-six-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next, we have a public comment period regarding a request to add a no outlet sign on Kettering Road where it intersects with Newcastle Road. So now the public comment period is open, do we have a presentation on this?
Yes, sir. Um, so this is at the intersection of Newcastle Road and Kettering Road. For those that have not driven our wonderful Tower Terrace section, Newcastle does connect to Tower Terrace. However, Kettering Road does not yet. So what they're having is some people that think that they can cut up Kettering Court on the Tower Terrace. That section has not been built yet, that will be built as that area develops. So eventually, Kettering Road will connect, and then we'll take away that no outlet sign. But for the interim, we are recommending putting the sign up to try and help some of that try cut-through traffic that can't actually cut through.
Have we received any comments for this outside of the meeting?
Yes, we have two comments.
Yes, we received two comments, uh, both in support. At ten thirty-three Kettering Road and ten thirty Kettering Road, they both wrote in support.
Okay, thank you. Now's the time for anyone from the public to come forward and speak on this topic. Do we have anyone that wants to speak on this one? Seeing no movement, we'll close the public comment period and move to the motion, please.
Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the Traffic Advisory Committee report to install a no outlet sign on Kettering Road where it intersects with Newcastle Road. And this is brought by Kevin Ernstur from ten thirty-three Kettering Road.
Second.
It's, it's been moved and seconded to receive and file the TAC report. Any questions or discussions on that? Seeing none, all those in favor of receiving and filing the TAC report, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As received and filed.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve Resolution number three-two-three-six-four. Approving installation of a no outlet sign on Kettering Road where it intersects with Newcastle Road.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Resolution number three-two-three-six-four. Are there any questions or discussion on this topic?
Just a brief comment.
Sure, Grant. Brief, I'm just kidding.
Brief. Uh, I hope that no outlet sign is more effective than the no outlet sign on northbound Indian Creek Road, where it has a sudden, uh, terminus at, uh, Tower Terrace. So i- if we can put, uh, streamers on it, uh, you know, maybe the thing, you know, like you see out in front of a commercial institution, the, uh, the, uh, balloon guy with the arms waving, something to gain attention, because I'm convinced people don't read no outlet signs.
Any other questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving Resolution number three-two-three-six-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Resolution carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number two-five-dash-zero-seven, amending Chapter one-twenty-six, Article one of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding building code. A second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-zero-seven, this is second consideration. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five-dash-zero-seven, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance carries.
Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-zero-eight, amending Chapter one-twenty-six, Article two of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding the plumbing code, and this is the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-zero-eight. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five-dash-zero-eight, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Ordinance carries.
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem. I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-zero-nine, amending Chapter one-twenty-six, Article four of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding mechanical code. This is our second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-zero-nine. Any questions or discussion? All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five-dash-zero-nine, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five, twenty-five-dash-zero-one, one-zero, amending Chapter one-twenty-six, Article six of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding housing code, second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-ten. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five-dash-ten, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ordinance carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-eleven, amending Chapter two-forty-seven of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding property maintenance, and this is the second consideration.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-eleven. Are there any questions or discussion on this ordinance? All those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five-dash-eleven, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That ordinance carries.
Mayor Pro Tem, I move to approve ordinance number twenty-five-dash-twelve, amending Chapter two-twenty-three of the Marion Code of Ordinances regarding nuisance abatement. This is our second consideration.
Second.
Of any questions or discussion on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving ordinance number twenty-five-dash-twelve, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That ordinance carries. That brings us to our final public forum of the evening. This time is set aside for comments from the public. Please understand that the City Council will not take any action on your comments at this time, due to requirements of the open meeting law, but may do so at a future meeting. If anyone wanna come forward and speak during this public comment section? One once, go on twice. All right, we'll close that public forum and move on to council comments. Grant?
Well, I just maybe will briefly reflect. Today we had a Metropolitan Planning Organization meeting, um, our policy board, and that group really is the management entity for, um, all manner of trails and road improvement projects that, um, are worked across our, our, our regional area. And, um, very certainly, Kim Downs is, is highly material to that, and, and Mike Barcalo, and I, I presume Jake are really in-depth on the technical side of supporting that effort. But it is, it is a regional effort by all of the communities in Metro Marion. And, um, I just think the important thing I wanted to convey is, is that, um, we really do think about not only this discreet improvements we're making in each community, but how those are all additive and beneficial for our entire region. So I just wanted to pass that along for general consumption. I continue to be astounded by the work that that group does, and by how Team Marion supports not only its efforts, but also provides technical commentary to all of that work that the MPO undertakes. So, uh, thanks to all stakeholders that are involved in that regional effort.
Thanks, Grant. Steve?
I know in the future, we're gonna be having a report and an update on our automated collection system. One of the benefits you need to make sure you note in that is that, for example, with the last three weeks that have been incredibly windy, we are not seeing all the triscans rolling in the street, and where you have to stop, and stop your car in the middle of the street to move a triscan, just to move down the road. So we are not seeing that, so that is a benefit to note.
Thanks, Steve. Will? Randy?
Well, thank you. The only thing I'll add is, I was thinking about it more in regards to kind of the parking, no parking in general, but especially with cul-de-sacs is, um, I just hope going forward that we're super crystal clear with communication on the rules. I think a lot of folks, this time around, had more questions, um, than general concerns compared to the last time. So just making sure that's crystal clear for folks. I understand that, uh, the no parking can be frustrating. I grew up on one of the first streets, we moved to one-sided parking, and it was an adjustment, uh, for a while when that happened. But it's been years since that happened, and the, the street has adjusted fairly well. It's kind of, it's always kind of a difficult circumstance situation when we get in these conversations as we go through the parking across the city, because, you know, two of the main functions of the city of Marion and the city council is public safety and infrastructure. So when those two come at a crossroads, it's kind of hard to not favor the public safety aspect a lot of the time, to make sure residents are safe, because, you know, these, these parking situations are frustrating until you're the one that needs an ambulance or a fire truck to come to, to your home, and then you're, you're grateful that they were there to get, they were able to get there a few seconds or a minute, two minutes faster than they would have if they, uh, get stuck in a situation like we saw a couple of years ago. So, um, that's all I have to add. If you celebrate Easter, happy Easter this weekend. Otherwise, uh, this meeting is adjourned. Thanks.